Okay, I'll call the village board meeting for October 1st, 2018 to order. Roll call please.
Joe Zitzelsberger, Sam Ballwig.
Here.
Sue Springman.
Here.
Bill Rana.
Here.
Bill Williams.
Here.
Erin Moran.
Here.
Okay, first thing we have is confirmation of open meeting compliance. Julie?
Yep, I can confirm that all of the public postings were prepared and posted. The official notices were sent to the newspaper and it was made available online last Thursday.
Okay, thank you. Next item we have is consent agenda. Would anybody like anything pulled? I'd look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Sam Ballwig, second by, is that you Joe? Joe Zitzelberger? Any other comments? Call the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post, as have it. Public comment, is there anyone here that would like to address the board on an issue that's not on the agenda for this evening? Hearing none. Todd, do you have anything today?
Just note, got a email from Steve Steinhoff from CARPSY about the survey process for the Greater Madison Vision that we've kind of kicked off here and we did a little push and plug on it for Wannakee and it's worked apparently. We are the frontrunner by far in surveys per thousand population at 26 surveys per thousand. The next highest is 7.8.
You just send that around to everybody because that's really impressive.
Yeah, I can forward it off. They've received 510 surveys from the 53597 zip code.
Wow.
Yeah.
So with that, don't stop, keep it going. It's great to have our voice there.
All right, since this will be on camera, congratulations to the Brewers today for winning their division. So I'm wearing the shirt in honor of that. Next we've got license and permits. Discuss and take action, operator license applications for Brianna Keller, Linda Reitenfeld, Elijah Cecilak, Brandon Pertzborn, and Phyllis Schwartz. Julie?
As previously done, the operator license applications have been provided to the police department for review. Find nothing wrong with the applicants. We would recommend that they be approved subject to successful completion of an approved beverage server training course and final review by the police department.
Okay. Any questions or I'd look for a motion?
We approve the aforementioned license application subject to completion of the approved responsible beverage server training course and review by the Wannakee Police Department.
Motion by Phil Williams, second by Bill Rana. Any other comments? Call the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post, as have it. New business, we have discuss and take action on health insurance for 2018. Adam, are you introducing this?
I can introduce this. So some of you may have been here, mostly of you have been here back in 2016 when we left the state ETF plan and contracted with Unity at the time, which is now Quartz. We signed with Quartz for a two-year contract with a cap and last year that was somewhat of an automatic renewal with an increase of roughly 6.8% or 6.7% in health insurance last year. So this year was the first, this year 2018 was the end of that two-year contract and so we touched base with our broker, which is Al Jaeger with Associated. And he'll get up to talk a little bit about the market and what are, some of our results were when we went out to market. But this year was particularly, proposals coming back were particularly challenging for sure. We've had some significant claims over the past year. If you had a chance to read my memo to the board and to staff, roughly every dollar of premium that we've been paying, Quartz has been generally paying out a $1.16 in benefit. And so there has, that has driven Quartz to, that's driven others in the market to provide health insurance coverage to not necessarily even consider us as a potential. But it also has driven Quartz to come, Quartz to come back with us at a 15% increase, which if you read my memo, that's about $175,000 and that's a pretty significant increase over one year's time. So we've, working with Quartz, they've provided us an alternative model, which is called the healthcare savings account model. Every year we pay a direct premium to our health insurer, every month finance cuts a check for those premiums. Roughly 95% of that premium per our personnel handbook goes, is paid for by the village, 5% of it's paid for by the employee as a benefit. The healthcare savings account model kind of does away with the direct premium payments in general and instead, well, it doesn't do away with it completely, but instead focuses on providing a savings account to an individual employee who's got health insurance, single or family, through a vendor like, we use North Shore as an example. The village would contribute to that health savings account, we would switch to a high deductible plan, but the village would be a big, would provide a big contribution to that health savings account to help the employee reach that deductible, or not reach deductible, but reach that deductible so that they don't have as much financial exposure. So that's the model that we've been discussing at a staff level. It reduces the village's premium contribution by roughly 25 to 28%. It reduces the individual employee's contribution level, premium contribution level, by roughly the same amount. And like I said before, the, it will actually lower the premium total for the village and it lowers the overall, so instead of 15% being the overall increase that the village would pay, we expect somewhere between maybe 1 to 2, 3% of a health insurance increase instead of a 15% one. My memo kind of lays it out pretty well. I'll toss it before we give it to Al.
There's been a good deal of work behind the scenes that probably the memo in the background here doesn't necessarily lay out for you, but we had, in knowing that this plan was coming to its expiration, Al worked with us to join together with about 20 other public agencies in pursuing the marketplace in a joint proposal. That aside, we still, as Adam explained, kind of stood out in that and we did the best we could amidst that arrangement. I would also note that the notion of the HSA model isn't something new to us in terms of considering it as an option. It was actually on the table back a couple years ago when we left the state plan and switched to Quartz. The issue at that point is we were making so many changes at once already that the notion of now adding in this HSA component just made it murky, murky and challenging for the employees and all the movements and these changes. With that said, we do stand here sort of at a critical, a critical moment. We vetted it thoroughly, options are limited both in terms of provider and plan design in order to get us a rate that we can absorb here. And we've got to work towards the employees' opportunity to make choice during open enrollment, which is like.
November.
Which is practically right now. So our time, our window is very short to make this decision, then work towards implementation of that HSA and then give all the employees the information they need to make the choice. This also dovetails then into our budget, which will be presented at the next board meeting. And that'll be a component of that overall picture. So here we are today.
And there's not necessarily an action to take tonight, but more just a guidance from the board on whether you, if you think we're going in the right direction or not. So I'm going to let Al talk a little bit about the market and some of the options and then we'll answer any questions.
I don't know if you want me to.
You can either stay there or go. I'm going to carry you more comfortably.
I'll stay here then. In terms of, from a summary standpoint, I would summarize by saying that literally hundreds of public employers have gone down this path with the mantra that we'd rather pay the staff members than the insurance company. And that's really what it boils down to from a process. And from a committee standpoint, there was one individual that asked the question fundamentally, this seems too good to be true, why haven't we done this before? And the short answer is, it's pretty complex. And when you think of the way healthcare has been provided, whether it was the last couple of years or prior with ETF, it was something you didn't need to think about in large part, right? You had low copay, low to no copays and low cost. Well, this kind of turns that on its ear from a standpoint that when you look at the plan design from a family standpoint, while you go from effectively no deductible to $6,000 deductible, you're offsetting that exposure with a health savings account. And as a result, staff members look at that as their money underneath it and as a result, it creates some consternation because you have to think through all the, from a process. So with that being said, there's a presentation that was pulled together and no, I'm not going to go through all the details of it because there's a lot more in it than probably is germane to what you want to focus on. But if you don't mind flipping through it, you may recall going back as much as those of you that were part of the meeting five years plus, we talked about compliance and we talked about cost and we talked about culture then as well. And that first and foremost, we always look at compliance and just making sure, whether it's Affordable Care Act or any other Wisconsin state changes, et cetera, we just need to make sure we're not doing something out of bounds there. We tracked peer comparisons and we just went from an RFP discussion, the proposal request discussion, talked through the, all those details with the committee as well, if you don't mind moving forward. The renewal calc process, Adam had touched on this already in large part, for every dollar in claims you're paying out, more than a $1.60. And in terms of looking at the various options, while looking at all carriers, there certainly was a significant feedback that the UW providers was the prevailing priority of focus. And I'd say that was part of the evolution on the state plan. With the state plan, that was the lowest cost option for such a long period of time that individuals migrated in that direction and in the end became aligned with them as a specialty provider, if you don't mind. As far as the options are concerned, again, looking at all the various options, the summary, I would say of all the data points, is the fact that when aligning with the Quartz option, whether you remain status quo at over 15% or whether you go down the path of the HSA, the HSA reinforces the mantra of rather pay the staff members than the insurance company. Okay?
Can you go back?
Please.
Maybe there's a slide that shows what the cost of the village is, the difference.
Breakdown?
Yeah.
I don't know if that's necessarily a slide, but that's the worksheet.
Yep. There was a sheet that was with, in the agenda, in the packet itself.
So it wasn't necessarily a slide, but when you were looking at it from the village standpoint, total employer cost going from 1.2, $1,227,000 if you didn't change anything.
Page 70. Sorry, Al.
No, that's fine. Didn't change anything, you'd be looking at $1,419,000. And this is just plugging in the formula of your contribution versus the premium. Okay? Keep moving?
Keep moving.
Okay. So in terms of current plan max amount of pocket, some of the education we'd begun providing spoke to the fact that while you don't have deductibles, you do have copays, you do have additional costs, whether it's emergency durable medical equipment, et cetera. And contractually, when you add up the total exposure of an individual, and this is a worst case scenario by all means, but when you add up, but if they incurred multiple copays as well as prescriptions, an individual could spend over $3,300 in a given year or $6,700 as a family, worst case scenario. The idea with this approach is you throw in the front-end deductible, $3,000 single, $6,000 family, and that includes everything, you know, no copays, no additional side charges, that includes everything. And by virtue of using that as a plan design and not covering, in having everything go flow through the deductible, that's where you get the premium savings and could offset it. And the example used for a target would be, for example, $2,500 contributed as a single or $5,000 as a family in a side account. And that side account is individualized. So as an individual, as Adam mentioned, for example, North Shore, they set up the health savings account, the second you put a dollar in that account, it's the staff member's dollar, no different than looking at any other bank account that may have set up. And it can be used for medical expenses and never be taxed. Okay? There was a side comparison provided also and it just reinforced what I had stated and that is, while you don't have the copays of prescriptions or you don't have durable medical equipment, you do see a $3,000 single, $6,000 family deductible highlighted. And when you look at that compared to present day, could be, for example, prescriptions alone, $2,350 single or $4,700 family when you look at copays. Okay? And there were multiple scenarios provided and in the end, when we've done this and other public employer scenarios, the main question is, when are the contributions made into the HSA? Because you don't save the entire 28% as a village month one, you save it over the course of 12 months. So while I may save, while you may be putting in, for example, $5,000 in a given side account over the course of the year, month one, what happens if I incur, I think the example requested was if a satellite fell on me or if a satellite fell on multiple individuals, what would happen in racking up millions of dollars in claims? The short answer is, well, the coverage would run all the claims through the deductible. Your responsibility would be $6,000 as a full family and you would be charged for $6,000. Now, if it's through a medical system, whether it's the, in this case, the UW system, they could set you up in a payment schedule for your $6,000 over the next 12 months. And depending on whether you as a village pay front-end, quarterly, or monthly, you could pay it off as you went and that works pretty well. However, if it's a large prescription, month one, pharmacies don't release your prescription until you front the money, so there tends not to be a payment program option in that case. So as a result, that becomes the scenario of the biggest challenge. And if you want to click through kind of the summary of the House effectively demonstrated, where you see in blue the deductible of what the individual responsibility is, $3,000 single, $6,000 family. And the green on the side would be the health savings account to offset that deductible. And then once you hit the deductible, you see 100% covered thereafter. Meanwhile, the key is preventative care would remain covered at 100%. So as long as it's billed as preventative care, it's processed 100%. A lot of the remaining pieces are educational on how an HSA works. The whole idea is it's like an IRA that can be used for medical expenses. It's portable, interest-bearing, and one of the things in talking with North Shore, as a result, you'd have all the, I guess, financial items like retiree, HRA, as well as, what's the other piece that they currently?
Oh, deferred cop.
Deferred cop, retiree HRA, as well as in this case, if you went down the path of the HSA, you'd have that with them as well. The whole idea, you can save, individuals can also put individual, their own money aside in this account in a pre-tax format and whether they want to save for immediate expenses, future expenses, or even retirement. So at age 65, they can take the money out and use it for, you know, purchase a boat or other.
Non-medical related.
Non-medically related expenses, but they would be simply taxed at their income level at that point in time. This speaks to some addition, how much they could contribute above and beyond between the village's contribution and the individual's contribution, how much they can put aside without being taxed. It speaks to all the different items they can use it for. So if an individual family, or individual or family is fortunate enough not to need it for the deductible coverage and they accumulate it year after year and they want to use it for things like orthodontics or other expenses that maybe not fall under the deductible, they could. Some of the education that needs to take place includes making sure staff members understand in order to use the, or receive HSA deposits tax-free, they do need to be on a qualified high deductible plan and therefore they can't be, for example, on a spouse's plan that's not a qualified plan to receive the funds from a pre-tax arrangement. This speaks to the distribution, as long as you spend it on qualified medical expenses, you're never taxed. If you spend it on non-qualified over 65, you just get taxed at the income level you're at at the point. If you spend it under 65, non-qualified, there is an additional 20% penalty. So big education on that. Flex accounts, you can't have your cake and eat it too from Uncle Sam's standpoint, meaning they, Uncle Sam puts a limit on how much you can put in the HSA. You can't also have a full flex. So we could have a limited flex for things like vision and dental, but you can't have both for those that are receiving deposits in the HSA. Just a promotion of how to become more of a consumer in healthcare and some of the roles of what you need to do from a process. And from a North Shore standpoint, what would be available, talking with them about accessing your money, making it easy for the individuals to access. And there's, like anything, there's pros and cons and while a lot of our discussions so far has been, you know, budgeting, consumerism, you own the, you own the funds, sound like positives, there's always negatives as well. I mean, consumerism may feel uncomfortable.
Sorry.
I think it's, some of the negatives, probably the two most significant negatives would be individuals that are on the point of service and we have, we have a couple, three with the last count I looked. And those individuals, you know, going from a regular deductible or regular plan design to, they, if they're going to out-of-network providers, those individuals, it'll be even a higher out-of-network deductible. So it's a significant change in terms of individuals on the point of service as well. And from a retiree standpoint, they would have choices in the equation, but again, there's a big educational component of the, what it is that's being offered. So it's changed and I would summarize by saying, that's probably the biggest negative is it's changed from a process standpoint. How was that for being relatively brief?
I understand this really well, so I'm not sure about the rest of the group, but I understand it really well. You should, I understand it really well.
I understand it. You really have troubles with, like people with injectables that need to happen early in a cycle? Do you have a borrowing program or how are we going to manage that?
Good question. So if you, so part of your contribution decision when it comes, I'd say from the budgeting step, if you go down this path, would be, do you do it monthly, do you quarterly in a deposit process? Very rarely do they do completely front-load, but there has been, and remind me of the term, exception scenarios.
A waiver?
Pardon me?
Like a waiver or hardship?
Hardship scenario for, you know, that type of situation. Other public employers that have gone down this path have established something to that effect. And that way you're not front-loading the deposits for the entire population that's on the plan, but on the flip side, it would be available so that scenario would be addressed.
How do we fund it?
Well, you mean, how would we pay? We haven't decided that because the risk is if you did front-load it and pay everybody on January 1st and they leave, they keep the money. Right. So from a, from that perspective, that doesn't seem like a wise choice. Right. Because it's for many, many employees. So we haven't determined yet, but if we can get some sort of hardship thing in place, it won't be as, I think it'll be easier for the employees to take if they only get it quarterly or something, as long as certain people could get it sooner if they.
So who does, as far as like the other thing that I see all the time is people go, hey, that lab test, that was for my health thing. And go, no, that's for your diabetes. And so they find out, I mean, it's not a big deal because you're obviously covering it with, with the cost, but they're like, hey, I thought that was my well check, you know? And, and the labs are always associated with the disease process generally and so not the health check. And so then they're like, that's a bill now. I mean, that's, which then it does drop cover, I mean, doesn't drop coverage, drops utilization, I think, because people say, I'm not coming in. I mean, which isn't so bad. I mean, I'm not saying everybody should come in, I'm just saying that you have to have some education process or they're just stunned the first time they see what a medical bill looks like and it's all cash.
No, you're spot on. So while we touched on it, we spoke to the fact that would be a big part of the education of understanding what is a preventative, is it, what is something you've been diagnosed and treated for in the past and understanding that.
Yeah, it's just stunning to them, I think.
It is. And meanwhile, going back to the difference, while that may have always been processed from a procedure, from the physician's side or the billing side of the medical process may have always been processed the same because now the insurance is, instead of it falling under the no deductible or no copay to now the $6,000, they'll become that much more aware. And to your point, we don't want to discourage the items they need to maintain access to, but on the flip side, this creates that much more awareness.
Did you guys come up with a list of prevention?
There is.
So you're using the CDC or using?
From a procedure standpoint, bottom line, while we list out the whole CPT or the whole listings, from a procedure coding, or it's not coding, we just listed out, there is always the caveat that you're still at the mercy of, if there was a conversation and entered into the Epic system, that there was discussion around something that may have been previously diagnosed or treated.
Right.
It kicks it back out into the deductible as opposed to the.
If I had a polyp on a colonoscopy, it means they're never preventive again.
Correct.
So you're paying, and not that it's a bad system, I'm just saying that happens to people and they're just stunned that there's never a preventive visit again.
Part of our, part of our role here is to not only educate them on how that will look different for them, but also, as I laid out, that their financial exposure is far less with this system in general.
Oh, I agree.
Than, than what even the system we have now is set up in place with $6,700 being our financial exposure, now dropping that down to $1,000.
I just, I'm not dissing it at all, I think it's a good idea. I'm just saying, you're going to have the idea like somebody says, hey, I had this money and you took it.
Right.
You know, as opposed to, I never saw that money because it was being paid directly for them. That's, I mean, and again, I think you're, the cost-wise it makes sense. It's just that the perception is going to be that money was mine and now it's gone.
You're 100% right that there's, from an education, not only on the difference of prevention versus what goes to the deductible is a big piece, but the other piece that becomes, you know, an understanding or a challenge is everyone gets a side account and while the amount that they have, to Adam's point, from an exposure standpoint, is less than what it presently is, they don't, they now view this as their money and now they're having to spend their money. And that's not necessarily a bad thing that they feel like is their money.
I understand, but.
But on the flip side, it's different. And that's exactly what you're getting at, is there's a lot of education that needs to take place.
And that's one of the, a couple of key steps, if, unless there's opposition on the board moving forward with this, we'll be doing a couple of things. One is assembling a comprehensive policy that would come. One is assembling a comprehensive policy that would come back to you for approval, that would be, become a component of our handbook. The other would be education process. I already talked with Adam, we need to set a few days aside where we set up fifteen minutes, meetings, all day long, and welcome employees and ask whatever questions they might have. So it's going to have to be a rather robust process and somewhat aggressive at the same time to make sure we work to answer employees' questions.
Other questions for Al?
Kind of confused here and there, but we had a, almost two million dollars in claims last year? Hundred and fifty-eight thousand a month. And in order for this to work, the awareness makes people more prudent in using medical coverage, medical services, et cetera. And that's the only way it can work by getting the claims down, right?
Well, in large part, claims down. And I would say the most pronounced area that we've seen change is prescription drugs. The best example I can think of are when you start talking about specialty drugs, not necessarily injectables, but specialty drugs.
Which are what?
Commercial, the most common commercial. Help me out here. Am I?
Many of the rheumatologic drugs are in the, and some.
RA, rheumatoid arthritis would be probably one of the most.
So you have choices between a generic version and.
The ones that are on the commercials on TV you're talking about, Al.
A large number of them, yeah.
And this may only impact a couple of individuals. Right now, they're paying two hundred dollars a month in this category, and there's only a couple of individuals that fall in that category. So those manufacturers that are charging thousands, in some cases, five thousand, in some cases, ten thousand in a given month for the prescription, if you contact them directly when we're under this type of plan design, they'll coupon it back down to five dollars. Many instances, couponing it down to five dollars for them as their out-of-pocket cost. And by doing it, by taking this approach on, back to your question, now it's being discounted from the manufacturer, instead it's just automatically paid by the insurer. Those are some of the key examples that we've experienced.
Yeah, I know that's true. In my case, I had one that, when I went to refill it, they said, when I switched, because Harris calls, I switched to some, they said a hundred and twenty bucks. I said, no, not this time, I'm going to go see what Costco says, and it went down to like fifteen.
Yep. So there's websites now that you can search different distribution options, to your example, whether it's Costco versus ABRC. Now, if the difference is two dollars, you're probably not going to drive ten minutes or twenty minutes to look at another option, but if it's a hundred dollars or a hundred and twenty dollars, it's probably worth your time to look elsewhere. So that's, I'd say, the most frequent example.
GI drugs too, some of them.
Okay, thank you.
Did we, did we spend enough time talking, talking enough about the, the dollar impact, the sort of bottom line scenario, where we would have been if we made no change in our plan design or program versus what we would see on the financial end benefit? Did we get into that enough? I know it's on there, but did you want, do you want it reviewed with Al here?
I understand it.
I think for, maybe for the sake of those in the audience or.
Can I ask one more question before that? Is it, was this like a, across the board, everybody, or was this like a single person event that pushed our whole, our single person cost?
I don't know if I'd call it a single person, but it, you know, the general rule of thumb applies where eighty-twenty rule, yeah.
Yeah, there's less than a handful of major claim situations, and that's probably what insurance is for, I guess, to help our folks with serious stuff.
Absolutely.
So as we go through this process, this is part of our budgeting process. So I've been talking with Todd and Renee about our budget. This is one item in our budget, to be clear. It is a significant item. So we have to look at it from a budget perspective. We also have to look at it from, are we providing our employees what's right for them and being fair to them as we go through this? And I think as they're talking about education, seeing I'm in this industry, that's the most important thing that we're going to be doing. And I have more questions about that and how we're going to educate. You're saying fifteen minute meetings? Your average person is still not, is going to go like this in a fifteen minute meeting? So however much education we can get to them, and the sooner we can get it to them, the better. So that's for the transition. Because they've been used to, for many, many years now, as you said, a pretty standard health plan that just goes to the doctor and everything is usually pretty good. There's no, really not a lot of out-of-pocket expenses for them, other than a few here and there.
I was a little tongue-in-cheek about that. My point was, we'll spend whatever time we need.
I, I know you were tongue-in-cheek. I'm just saying, it's very important that we do have a process of how we're going to educate the employees. That makes it fair to them so they can see, here's why this is a good thing, as I think one of you said, this is too good to be true, some people will say about this. Others will still just think, oh, I see six thousand dollars, that's, they figure focus in at six thousand dollars, even though they're not really paying six thousand dollars. That's what it puts in their head. So we have to make sure they're educated properly. Outside of that, in looking at it from a dollars and cents standpoint, this does make sense for the board. And you'll see that if you looked at your numbers, or as you look at them and review them before our next budget meeting, you'll see that.
This isn't going to dissuade people from getting the medical care they need so they're healthy. I mean, I don't want people not to go in and get a glucose check because A1C, because if they're diabetic, they got to monitor it.
They will pay for that now, they will pay for it.
So there are certain, so there, we need to educate people on what they're paying for that's going to be different not so they, and they help them manage that because you don't, they'll get sicker, it'll cost more.
So, so my point, Sue, is as long as we educate them, I mean, we could take, we could take a position and say, you know, we're going to stay with quartz. A deductible for us to keep it into an affordability range for the, for the village, we'd have to increase that deductible. So they would have that out-of-pocket expense either way, if not more, going to that other deductible.
No, I'm, I'm all, I understand an HSA, I think it's a good thing to do, and education is key, and somebody's going to have to be available for a very long time because people are going to have questions for a long time.
It's going to be a year or two of education. Because we get a calls every day just trying to figure out what happened, you know, just with the transition. Not that it's worse, they're getting coverage, but where the, it's, it's back to I pay and you get paid. I mean, you know, this is different for people because.
When we looked at the benefits to the employee, both from a financial perspective but also from the care that they expect and that we want to deliver as a village, this made the most sense. Because if you look at the other options that we have, it's either financially not sustainable or it impacts the benefits so much so that it's worse than the HSA would be. So it just makes the most sense from that perspective. And we, you know, two weeks ago, we found out that this was going to be the case. So we really do have to ramp up the education, which is why we're looking to you for guidance to make sure that you're comfortable with us moving forward this way.
It's also implying that there are correctable changes that are, people are doing stuff that's not efficient.
Going out of network.
Right. Because if they're saying, we can do this and make it cheaper, you go, they probably can't. I mean, unless, if there's, if there are processes that are same, but that's quartz's thing, not mine. I mean, that's to them.
So from a, from our perspective, we're just looking to give you guidance to say, yes, let's move forward with this as an option? So that's, I mean, is there anybody who's opposed to this? We don't need to take a vote or anything, do we, or make a motion? Or do we want us to make a motion?
I think, I don't think we need that. We'll come forward with a proposal with North Shore for management.
Yep.
A contract of sorts with quartz for renewal.
We have that already.
Oh, that's in hand, just has to be signed.
It would just need to be, the renewal just needs to be signed.
And the policy language, our own internal policy.
We'll need a handbook change, a little bit of a handbook change. We'll need an agreement with North Shore and that should be it.
The only parameter that is, will be tricky a little bit, and it depends on an array of factors, but remits negotiations with the police department. So you're providing us guidance with how we're going to work with the rest of the employee groups will help us as we then be, then pursue the negotiations with police clearly. We've been kind of waiting on this piece.
Okay, so everybody, everybody good down here? Yes? Phil? Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, next item under new business is revenue obligation in an amount, I'm sorry, discussing tick action resolution authorizing issuance of municipal revenue obligation amount not to exceed six hundred and ten thousand dollars at Home Again, Wanakee LLC.
So this one, similar to, I don't remember if it was the last meeting or maybe two meetings ago, we just need to formally issue the municipal revenue obligation for At Home Again. When we did the developer agreement with them, we had, as long as they met certain criteria, which they have met in terms of how much they spend, spent on their project, then we would issue this municipal revenue obligation to pay them, to reimburse them six hundred and ten thousand for their project. So the, all the, the formal wording and everything has been reviewed by our village attorney, by bond counsel. And again, we've already agreed to this, we just need to formally issue the municipal revenue obligation because our payments need to start November first.
And they've made all the correct, or made all the improvements that they said they were to get the value that we talked about?
Correct.
Perfect. Okay? Motion by Sue Springman.
Second.
Second by Phil Williams. Any other comments or questions? Okay, I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? Ayes have it. Motion adjourned by Bill Ranham.
Second.
Jump right in on that one.
Everybody, thank you, and I will say, I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? Ayes have it.